My time.
When will you be on our time?
I hope, Jerry, I really do. We have a couple more weeks, I think. Yeah.
Hello?
Hi.
You can hear me okay, Rick?
Yep.
Perfect.
Came through very good.
You said, Councilmember Lempris, hello.
Louis, I've been missing you. How are you?
I've been missing you too. Yes, running around our streets in beautiful Atherton. I really missed the spring.
Yeah. Yeah, but your house is no longer getting inundated every morning and afternoon with, the school's closed.
Well, you know, I guess, I've missed that too.
I don't get to go, I don't go by it, you know, three times a day or whatever I normally do.
Yeah, I think our air pollution has really cleared up around there, too.
Yeah, that's true. I was in San Francisco yesterday and it's bright blue, beautiful skies.
Sparkling, huh?
Yeah.
Sounds pretty quiet around there.
It's pretty quiet, but there's a lot of people on the streets.
I care that Palo Alto has closed some of those too, but they didn't identify which one. The traffic, the cars. Do you have any?
Yeah, I read that. I don't know which ones.
Oakland's closed a whole big bunch of them.
Yeah, I thought that was great. I thought she did a great interview, Libby.
Okay, it's seven o'clock. I think we should call the meeting to order. Anthony, could you please do the roll call?
Certainly, Councilmember Weest. I see him here. I know he's, I think he's trying to use his microphone. Widmer?
Yep, I'm here.
Well, no, Lempris?
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
I'm here, thank you.
Okay, and Mayor DeGolia?
Yep, I'm here. Okay, we're not doing the Pledge of Allegiance tonight, so the first item are the presentations. We have two presentations tonight. And the first presentation is a recognition of Atherton's Public Safety Communications Personnel. And I will read it quickly. Whereas the City Council, the town of Atherton, along with the entire community, would like to honor the contributions of all communications personnel in the public sector safety arena for their continued efforts to preserve public safety through our 911 non-emergency lines and dispatch of our police personnel to thousands of calls for service each year across the nation. And whereas each year, the second week of April is dedicated to the men and women who serve as public safety communicators. It was first conceived by Patricia Anderson of the Contra Costa County Sheriff's Office in 1981, and was observed only at that agency for three years. Members of the Virginia and North Carolina chapters of the Association of Public Safety Communication officials became involved in mid 1980s. And by the early 1990s, the National App Co. Organization convinced Congress of the need for a formal proclamation. Representative Edward Markey from Massachusetts introduced what became House Resolution 284 to create a National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. According to congressional procedure, it was introduced twice more in 1993 and 1994, and then became permanent without the need of a yearly introduction. And whereas the City Council, the town of Atherton, would like to declare a National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, April 12th to 18th, which has been set aside so everyone can be made aware of the hard work and dedication which provides a vital link to the public safety services on which we have come to rely every day. And whereas the City Council of the town of Atherton wished to thank them for all of the sacrifices they make to create a better and safer world for the public. Their commitment to the profession is appreciated by the Public Safety Communications community and the citizens we serve. And now therefore, as Mayor of the town of Atherton, on behalf of this Atherton City Council, I hereby commend the outstanding service performed by our telecommunications personnel. And I just want to say that work by the communications personnel in Atherton is remarkable and essential for all of us that communicate so regularly with the Police Department. So I think it's very appropriate that we recognize that this is Public Safety Communications Personnel Week. The second proclamation is consistent with the first, but it is in recognition of Janelle Miller. And I'm looking for that resolution, but it looks like in my packet I have two copies of the Public Safety Communications Personnel Resolution. Yeah, so let's see, is it online, George?
It is.
Say that again?
Yes, sir.
The chief has it. He may be able to read it.
Okay, I don't have it.
No, yeah.
Neither do I.
Chief?
Neither do I.
Or Commander?
I have it. This is Anthony.
Man, are you on the phone?
Well, if Anthony has it, why didn't he read it?
I can, I can read it now.
All right.
Wait. Okay, in recognition of Atherton dispatcher and records assistant Janelle Miller. Janelle Miller is a veteran dispatcher with over 23 years of service to the town of Atherton. And whereas the City Council of the town of Atherton, along with the entire community, would like to honor the contributions that Janelle Miller has made during her public safety career. And whereas Janelle's involvement in the Communications Division as a premier dispatcher, who also served as the Red E. Fox Ambassador, who taught children how to use 911 in our elementary schools, collected and prepared uniform crime report statistics from the Department of Justice, trained new dispatchers, completed hundreds of public records requests, maintained the procedures folder, answered and handled thousands of 911 and non-emergency calls while always staying calm and professional. And whereas because of Janelle's longevity, in addition to her particular areas of expertise, made her an invaluable asset to this organization. And whereas Janelle worked tirelessly over the years to ensure that our 911 call taking center remained the top in customer service to our residents with her positive attitude and no call-too-small mindset. Now therefore, Mayor Rick DeGolia, on behalf of the City Council, hereby commended outstanding community service performed by Janelle Miller during her career and wished her well into retirement. The Police Department also prepared a small communication to acknowledge all the work that Janelle did. They just wanted to acknowledge her, and I don't know if Janelle joined the call. She was planning on joining the call. But I know Jennifer Frew joined the call.
Hi, Anthony, I'm here.
Oh, hello, Janelle. So I know the council and the mayor just wanted to commend you and thank you for all your service.
Thank you.
And the chief is on the line now.
Hey, chief.
Hello, Janelle, and Mayor and council members. I had the distinct honor to deliver this proclamation to Janelle in person at her retirement lunch with her family. And it goes without saying that she really was the voice of the Police Department. And when you think of customer service, you think of Janelle as our residents, too. So thank you, Janelle.
Thank you so much, chief, and thank you, guys. I really appreciate it. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve the residents. I'm trying not to cry, sorry, but it really truly has been an honor and a privilege to work with all the residents. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Janelle.
Thank you, Janelle.
Thank you, Janelle.
We really appreciate it.
It's been a great.
Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Yeah, it's been great to know you and work with you over the last dozen years. And just really think that you've done a great job with Reddy Fox and all that you've done with the kids. And have a great time in retirement.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, so much.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is public comment. Does anyone have public comment at this time? We will also take public comment during each of the items on the agenda.
Care to go in, there's at least one.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Anthony. I was just going to acknowledge that you had sent an email saying that there were a couple of public comments, but I didn't know if those were to be communicated now or later.
Mr. Preston is on the call and he can, he'd like to give his public comment now.
Great.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. My name's Andrew Preston. We live in Atherton on 95 Heather Drive and have for, I don't know, six, seven, eight years. I can't keep track. Thank you for all your service and your help for this, for the community also. Anthony was very kind to help me through what was able to be talked about and what would be useful here. My comment regards, resolves around gardeners, yard work, construction, things like that, which I know you don't have a lot of control over because it's a decree coming down from the county, the public health, and with respect to shelter in place. But to the extent that the council has powers to do what communities can override or do in their own best interests, or to the extent that the council can communicate back to the county about their restrictions, I would implore you to do so. Right now, I think it's reasonably spotty. I can, I can't think of a, of a job that is least COVID-19 dangerous as one or two gardeners cutting your grass in your backyard. Or I had an emergency need to have a tree limb removed and having a guy in a tree with a, with a chainsaw as far as not spreading and/or becoming contagious with respect to the virus. You have a number of residents who are elderly, who can't go down to Home Depot, like I've got to go do, and go buy a lawnmower and cut the grass. You know, I'm 66, but I can still cut the grass. But there are people I know who are 80s and 90s who aren't able to do that themselves. It's a very spotty and forced rule. I mean, Sunday, they were cutting grass behind me, and the gardener was in the house across the street from us today. And I don't have any problem with it. I'm just saying it's just not, it's just not a reasonable expectation or need relative to what's going on and what's out there. I have a similar view about construction. I mean, in Menlo Park, they're digging a big hole. Stanford got released to dig a hole and pit construction up. I guess they have clout. I would imagine that there was at least at any point in time in Atherton, a billion dollars' worth of construction going on in homes and remodeling and new homes coming up and down, which are frozen, which eventually will come back online. But in the meantime, the city is losing, the town is rather losing millions of dollars of potential tax revenue because the longer those construction projects are delayed, the longer it takes for that assessment to come online and the tax revenue to flow. So I would ask the council to consider a strongly worded request back to the county to reconsider this kind of a restriction, especially with respect to gardening, yard work, tree, tree removal. I mean, what better time to do all this work right now but the spring? And when there's people home and they can help direct the gardeners and the like to get the work that needs to be done, done. So that's, that's my request. And to a certain extent, I also believe that the way this is being enforced is hurting people who can least afford it. Our gardeners and our, our, our home people, we're paying them even though they're not working because we can do that. But many people are not paying them. So these are Latinos, these are minority people who are living hand, you know, month to month, day to day. And, you know, we're asking them to not be able to support their families for, for some reason which I can't fathom relative to the need for it. So that's my, that's my two cents. So thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. We very much appreciate your comment. It is well said. Is there any other public comment? Okay, hearing no other public comment, let's go on to the City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the City Council. You have the written report before you, and there are a number of staff on the phone who can help answer any questions the council may have. There were no significant Q and A issues during some of our one-on-one. But I do want to mention that this report, it also requires a motion to certify the continuing emergency and ratify such rules and regulations enacted by the Director of Emergency Services in response to COVID-19. There have been no changes to those rules since last week. The Town Center project that the council authorized operation of with respect to City Hall and the Police Department construction is operating well within the restrictions provided, and there have been no significant issues. The Building Department has been out at the job site on a regular basis. And code enforcement's muted as well, and of course, it is right next to the Police Department. And there have been daily reports from the contractor as required back to the Building Department in writing with respect to the workers on the job site and those screening questions. There have also been, as mentioned by Mr. Preston, a number of questions around gardening and landscaping services as well as outdoor recreation and construction. As noted, the town's required to abide by the county's shelter-in-place order. We can make things more restrictive, but we can't make them less restrictive. Gardening and landscaping are not permissible unless they are for the immediate health and safety of the resident or for purposes of brush fire clearance or a tree down or something like that. That's a safety issue. Landscaping and gardening services for general upkeep or cosmetic maintenance is not permissible. It's anticipated, and there's been a lot of conversation around this so far, that the shelter-in-place order will probably continue. But as it does so, the county is going to review restrictions and make modifications that it may deem appropriate. The town hopes that this will allow these and other similar activities to resume soon on a limited basis. That concludes the City Manager's report. This does require a motion which would need a roll call vote.
Okay, are there any questions?
I just have a comment.
Please.
As we talked last time, when we opened up construction for the Civic Center, that it would open up ourselves to a bunch of calls to say, you guys are doing it. Why aren't you opening it? And I've been getting those calls. So I, and I've explained to the people who've called me, you know, how this is different. I think it would be, it would, it might help if we at least explain on the website, George, that while we have opened up construction, why and how it differs and that it was exempt from the county and actually the state laws or the state stay-in-place order. And so that might help people understand a little bit better because it, they do, they are specifically citing, you guys have done it for yourself, but you're not letting other people do it, which is what we brought up in the discussion. So we need to just make that clear and, and maybe cut down on some calls. Thanks a lot.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
I have a question. Oh, go ahead, go ahead, Gary, please. No, thanks, Mike. I just wanted to thank the chief. I, you know, related to TJ Boyle, Employee of the Quarter and Employee of the Year. I'm just going to say from what I've heard from general members of the public and knowing what he's done for, as a reserve for our regular program, you made an excellent choice. And I just want to let you know that I think all of us recognize that. And what a great selection and what a great person for that, the Officer of the Year component. So thank you for that and your update to us.
Mike, did you have a comment or question?
Yeah, just a, I had a question on this, and then I'd like to have a comment before we have a motion. I've thought about the motion. But my question on the City Manager Report really goes to gardening in the park. I saw a comment in the almanac and just want to know, George, what's, what are we doing as far as gardening in the park? And why is that different? Say, for example, if we're allowing the lawns be mowed in the park, why is that different from people allowing their lawns to be mowed at home?
The, the park is still open for public access. And as such, there is still a safety concern with respect to people going through the park on paths and pedestrian ways. We have scaled back the mowing operations in the park. It's less frequent. It's once every three weeks or so. But it's just for the large section of the park where people will gather as general public. It is different than a private residential property. You're not going to sue yourself if you trip and fall on your own property, but you would sue the town if you tripped and fell in the park. And it as an essential operation, that, that's the minimal maintenance we're doing. We're not doing any more cosmetic or weed pulling and things like that within the park. We've scaled all of that back. We're not maintaining the tennis courts or any of our facilities with the exception of City Hall itself.
Good, that makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Well, I will make one. I, I mean, certainly, I'm in favor of supporting a resolution to continue the emergency declaration. This issue about gardening and landscaping has come up a lot. And I sent an email to the supervisors and it was forwarded on to the chief medical officer with no response. And I know that Bill is on a subcommittee of the electeds in the county and has also raised the concerns that are essentially what Andrew Preston articulated in his public comment. Concern about there being a good number of elderly residents who can't go out and take care of their properties. And it reduces their ability to enjoy their property because the lawns are three or four weeks long. And, and I've heard all kinds of concerns about it. And, and it's, we all know that there are some gardeners that continue to operate. So some people are obeying it and some aren't. I, I'd like, I mean, I, I don't know how the whole council feels about the issue, but, and I understand that we can't make a decision that would limit the applicability of, of the medical officer's shelter-in-place order, though we could be more restrictive. But I think we can communicate that we think that this is an area that needs loosening. And just talking among ourselves isn't good enough. We, we need to communicate that to the county. So George, do you have a recommendation on a way that we could do that?
Well, I know that there is an elected's call that occurs three days a week, and there's a couple of members of the council that participate in those calls. And it's not only our community that's voiced those concerns to the county vocally. But we could certainly write something if, if it's the council's desire to express it more formally. We can prepare a letter for the mayor's signature.
I also participate in the weekly conferences with the municipal attorneys, including county council, that interprets and drafts the shelter-in-place order. So I can bring this to his attention and request that they revisit this issue soon or at the very latest, at the next time that they're going to be potentially revising their shelter-in-place order.
And Rick, one thing, you know, I, you heard, you know, heard I asked the question today, and you heard what Mike Calagie's comment was. As a follow-up to that, I did take the liberty of sending him the information that we looked at just last week and said, here are some things that our, our Building Department and our Builders Roundtable have put together, you know, for you to start considering and start talking to the, to the, to the supervisors about changing. And, and I will be forwarding that. As you know, I'm on the committee for reopening as well as two other committees. And I'll be talking specifically about that with, with that group. I already have, but there's a separate meeting on Friday. I already have, but there's a separate meeting on Friday and then also talking to them about the gardeners, because many of the gardeners work independently, and I just don't see that there's a major risk with that as well. So, so we're carrying the message forward wherever we can.
Yeah, I think that's great. I mean, it seems like it's appropriate on the agenda to raise this since we're considering the emergency resolution. If others feel good about it, I'd feel good about sending a letter from the whole council to the county manager, letting him know. I, I think it's an important issue, and I have heard, I hear from at least two people every day on this subject.
I'm, I'm fine with that, Rick.
Yeah, I am as well, you know, and I think that just the one caveat is that we are not saying that the six-foot rule wouldn't be applicable to them if they're working in a team because they are leapfrogging, if they are leapfrogging from one site, you know, Atherton's a little unusual because often our gardeners actually, you know, go to one site and that's it for five days. So, you know, but I'm supportive of it.
Yeah, I, I think the guy, I mean, the real thing that I'd love to see us do is modify the guidelines we did for construction for, for gardening. Maybe, Bill, you could raise that from your committee. I, I think that it would be great for the county to have some guidelines on gardening that would allow a relaxation, and maybe it's where there's only one gardener working. So, you know, there's, there's less contact, but I mean, I, I think it's important to raise the issue because we're hearing from so many residents on it.
Yeah. I'll bring it up on Friday.
Okay. So George, that sounds, go ahead, Elizabeth.
Can I just make a comment?
Yes.
I'm, I'm generally supportive of this because I've had my gardener's calls, when can I come back and do maintenance on your house? When, you know, I can, they travel a long distance. It's not like they just live in the next door town. They travel from like Salinas to come up, and they, it, it, so I, I worry about the, the gardeners and their health and safety in not sheltering in place and then coming out into the world and, you know, if they do encounter other people, I mean, the social distancing of, well, they succeed and they have to wear masks and, you know, and in the encounters with the homeowners, I really think that that has to be expressed. And I know Andrew Preston said, you know, the homeowners are home now, they can direct them and, and tell them more how to do and what needs to be done. And just all that caution has to be at the forefront of everybody's mind, and just because you have a small team coming to your home, and it's not typically just one person that comes because these properties are so big and they do need, you know, more of a team of, of workers to, to maintain them. So that's my concern, but I certainly feel that, that there are people that can't go out and buy a lawnmower and start mowing their acres of lawn, and it needs to be cut.
Okay. So let's, George, let's put a letter together and then we'll share it with the council.
Out of curiosity, I apologize for interrupting. Can we, can, in, in spirit of your, our, your comments related to consistent with the Construction Industries flyer, can we do a modified version of that in Spanish so that we can get it to our residents and they can hand it to their landscapers so that they have some knowledge of, you know, they may not have the direct knowledge of what the additional requirements would be for Atherton or just site safety, so on and so forth? Maybe that's an additional step that we can take for that?
The flyers that we did distribute were distributed in Spanish.
Oh, good, good. Okay. And maybe is there some way that we can try to get those in residents' hands so they can give it to their gardeners? Because most people know when their gardener's coming, at least which day, and they're, like, Vice Mayor Lewis has mentioned, they're making contact with the residents, and if they're making contact with the residents to come back to work, that would be a good opportunity for them to provide the gardener, you know, or say, hey, there's going to be an envelope, you know, blah, blah, please read it type of thing as a process of this transition.
Sure. Mailings will take a little longer than normal, just in terms of resources, but we did do an immediate roll call that went to all the lines in town.
The county's, the county's website has got a translate button, and it translates into, I think, five different languages.
Oh, okay. Mike, you have a comment?
I, I have a comment on the, on the broader continuing emergency issue, so whenever we're done with the gardening thing.
I think that's pretty good direction on the gardening. Go ahead.
My, my comment on that, on the continuing emergencies is, I'm absolutely in favor of continuing at this time. I would like us to begin to, to think or talk about how this might end and what we would be looking for, the kind of things we'd like to think about, because it came upon us very quickly, and I think we acted properly, and I'm proud of what we've done. But I'd like to make sure that we're thoughtful about the ending process, and I don't know what that means, but I think we should begin to put together a process to begin to think about how that might work or what role we might play in that.
So, so, Mr. Mayor, if I may respond to that?
Go ahead.
So, so Mike?
Your solo on the agenda.
So I'm on, I'm on a couple, three committees, as I mentioned. One is what we would get out and, and what we would start in what limited fashion under what responsibilities and what rules, how to get started, how to restart the economy. Another one is assessing what the issues might be with regards to the financial ramifications of this, the shutdown and its continuance. And then the other one is, you know, should this not be, as, as some people think it's going to happen, is going to come back in the fall, how are we going to mitigate the impact of a second wave? You know, and so some of those things, I mean, we're taking those steps now. We have a, you know, we have a surplus of beds, we have a surplus of ventilators, we have a surplus of, of, you know, face masks and things like that, and we're stockpiling those as a county. But, but those are three. There was like seven committees, and as I said, I'm on those three. So, but it's not just, let's just get reopened. It's how are we going to open and what piecemeal? The governor talked about a little bit of that yesterday in his call with regards to restaurants will be open, but they have to be, you know, tables must be six feet apart, and people have to wear face masks and gloves and things like that. So that stuff is being documented.
Yeah, and my, my question is, is, agreed, thanks, Bill. And that's all important. I think that's all stuff the state and the county are doing. I just want to make sure that we, as a town, are being thoughtful about the decisions that are within our discretion when the time comes.
Just in addition, I, I think that's very important, and, you know, we, we had a long discussion about residential construction, and we went over a whole set of guidelines, but then they became moot because construction, residential construction was banned by the county. But I think that kind of guidance and a similar one, frankly, for, for gardening would be really valuable, and I think we should think about what else needs to be done. I think it's a very important subject. Mike, if you think it's sufficiently important for us to establish a subcommittee of the council to, you know, to discuss that and, and brainstorm on that and present ideas to the council, I would support that.
I, I do think it's important. I'd love to hear other people's thoughts, but yeah, I do think it's important, and if the subcommittee's the way to go, that's, that's a good way to go. It's one way.
Well, it's an efficient way to go because we don't take, we don't brainstorm, you know, in an open meeting.
Yeah.
You'd be talking about an ad hoc committee, Mayor. You'd be talking about an ad hoc committee, not a brainstorm.
Yeah, so it would be an ad hoc committee of two council members to brainstorm on what we need to do.
Right. The issues that come up, if I may add into this, and I think that Mike does raise a, a very local, what our domain is controlled question, and, you know, the, to the extent that we have the park, you know, what are we going to do about the park and recreation and sports? And I'm thinking that you're kind of looking at that and those types of things, right, Mike? Kind of how we're going to unroll ourselves a bit?
I think so, but I also could see a world where the county says, similar to the construction, the county says in this instance, say, gardeners are, that's okay, we're going to permit gardening to go ahead, and we say, great, in Atherton, we do want gardening to proceed, but we want it to be done with the following five conditions or the, you know, similar to what we did in construction.
Sure.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. That's, I mean, I think that's perfectly reasonable.
Yeah, I, I would agree as well. I think that we have a decent foundation with, you know, the construction component, tiering it into the landscaping component and, and then so on.
I, I just ask anyone who wants to serve on that committee, if you just send me an email, I will set up a committee. I, I think it's a terrific idea. And, and on the subject, you know, we're having a, a town-wide forum, virtual forum on Friday, and one of the guests at the forum is Linda Barman, who is the Associate Director of the Stanford outpatient clinic called The Express Clinics, and, and they've just established a new clinic called The Crown Clinic, and they have inherited the entire response for COVID-19 testing for Stanford. They're, they're the ones that initiated the, the first drive-through testing in California and one of the first in the country. And, and so Linda's going to be prepared to speak about that, and I asked her specifically, in the context of opening up the shelter-in-place, what are the things that we need to think about from testing and tracing? And this Crown Clinic that they just established, it, one of the big features of it is to do tracing for anybody that has a positive test. So I, I'm not sure how that relates to us specifically in Atherton, although I, I imagine that if we wanted to implement something like that, you know, for our residents and those that work here, that, that's something we could think about. But I think the idea of a subcommittee is a great idea.
I have a question.
Yes.
If I may. So, and this is probably going to be a question for George, since we're talking about the virus and in terms of testing and things. Do we have any statistics on cases in Atherton, people that have tested positive or actually gotten the virus? Do we have any statistics on that?
We do not. We haven't been advised, to my knowledge, that there are any positive tests from local residents. Chief Commander, are you aware of any?
I am not.
Well, we know that there were some at Sacred Heart early on in February.
That, that was, I believe, relative, not a student or teacher, was it?
I think you're talking about a Menlo school where there was a relative of a teacher. But also, George, I asked a few weeks ago, and you said you would be informed if there was.
That's what we were told, yeah. We were told that we would be advised if there were, but, and at this point, we haven't been advised of any.
Okay.
I'm aware that
That's fortunate.
That Santa Clara is posting the number of positive tests of residents by, within cities. I don't think San Mateo is doing that.
They are not, and Contra Costa's doing the same thing, and at the county level, they've, they've talked about their statistics, and it, it took them a while to even get those dashboards up with the amount of testing that's being done within the county. They were reluctant to do it because the number is just not always consistent, depending on who you're talking to, so they wanted to get some consistency before they started putting it up on the website, but data by city is not something they're considering at this point.
Hmm. I find that odd.
So any other, any further comment on the city manager's report?
Can I make a motion?
Please.
Can I make a motion to certify the continuing emergency and ratify such rules and regulations enacted by the Director of Emergency Services in response to COVID-19?
Second.
Councilmember Widmer?
Yes.
Beast?
Aye.
Lempress?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Golia?
Aye. Okay. Moving on to the consent calendar. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent calendar? These are items six through 10.
Mr. Mayor, just a note, there, there are a number of non-substantive language changes to the minutes for November 20th, February 19th, March 4th, and March 18th. Those are actually listed in the, in the visual image here, but again, they're non-substantive changes, and they can be done independently via email to Anthony, you can make the changes before they're finalized.
Hearing no comment, does anyone from the public wish to remove anything from the consent calendar? If there are no comments on anything on the consent calendar, I will entertain a motion.
Can I make a motion?
I'm moved.
Okay, Elizabeth, that's your motion, and Kerry, your second?
Second, adjustments by the city manager.
Very good.
Yeah.
Widmer?
For the, in the minute.
Yes. Beast?
Aye.
Lempress?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Yes. Okay. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, which is item number 11. And is that Robert?
Yes.
Does the city manage that?
Yes. Hi, Mayor. Yes. Item number 11 is a public hearing. It's conduct the public hearing, and if appropriate, introduce first reading the attached ordinance and ordinance of the City Council of the Town of Atherton amending Title II. We're adding Chapter 2.61 relating to authority to execute contracts authorizing the city manager and other designated town officials to execute contracts. It is estimated that the closing of and sale of the COPs will proceed in late May to mid-June of 2020. Once that decision is made for the sale of COPs, signatures will be required and necessary financing documents. The attached ordinance allows for the city manager to sign these documents. As currently, Government Code Section 40602 provides that the mayor shall be the signatory of the, for the municipal, municipal agency. The section provides that the mayor shall sign all written contracts and conveyances made or entered into by the city and all instruments requiring the city seal. The section of the code also provides that the legislative body of the agency may provide by ordinance that the instruments described above be signed by an officer other than the mayor. For clarity and to accommodate the sale of bonds, bond proceeds and immediacy of when transactions need to occur, staff and bond counsel recommend that the town adopt the standard ordinance under Government Code Section 40602, providing that all contracts shall be in writing and shall be signed by the mayor, the city manager, or by any other person authorized by state law, this code, or an ordinance, resolution, motion, or contract adopted or approved by the city council. The ordinance adds the following, Chapter 2.61, authority to contract. The adoption of ordinance will allow for the financing and authorization of the sale of bonds document to be signed once the notice to proceed for initial sale of bonds is for initial sale of bonds is announced. This will allow the city manager to execute contracts to initiate the town's 2020 COPs. Again, this item does not change current practice. It is a required measure as we move forward with the issuance of COPs. It works in concert with the town's other purchasing and authority ordinances. This concludes the staff report presentation.
I was unmuted. Does anyone have any questions?
Yep, I do.
Please.
Just a practical question, I guess, is why do we care whether the mayor signs this or the city manager signs this? It's the first time in its history that the town, it's not something we do very often. So I'm just curious, why do we care?
It's not that we care, hang on, Robert. It's not that we care, it's actually just for the purposes of the COPs and bond financing, they require us to have an ordinance such as this on the books.
The bond, so the bond financiers require, the bond underwriters rather, require that the city manager sign it as opposed to the mayor? Or just somebody be?
No, that it be somebody be authorized and the ordinance is the standard ordinance that does that.
Let me follow up to that question, because I had a question, which is, does this change anything that we're practicing right now?
No, but we just don't have the ordinance on the books. We look through our books and we've got, we have the city manager's ordinance that gives me the authority to execute contracts or administer contracts. The purchasing ordinance does the same. There's a separate resolution that the council adopts that sets threshold limits for those things under what I can sign versus what the mayor has to sign, when the council has to approve. And so those things existed, but we didn't have an actual ordinance that said, hey, the mayor or the city manager can execute contracts unless the council says somebody else can.
Okay. And are there any other questions? Is there any public comment on this issue? Okay, hearing no public comment, are there any comments from the council?
I'm sorry, Mayor, let the record reflect that the public hearing has been opened.
Okay, very good. Hearing no comments, can I get a motion? So. That's a motion by Councilmember Weest and a second by Councilmember Lewis.
Okay.
Widmer?
Yes.
Weest?
Aye.
Lempres?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Golia?
Yes. Okay, we're moving on to item number 12, which is a public hearing to consider adopting a mitigated negative declaration, a mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program, approving a conditional use permit, and direct staff can negotiate with Menlo School and Menlo College for the use of the property for the Calten Field Stormwater Capture Project.
So, Rick, I've got to recuse myself from this, so I'm signing off.
Okay, Bill, I'm aware of that, and
And we have to actually state the basis for the recusal, so.
Okay, I'm signing off due to the fact that I am an adjunct professor over at Menlo College, and I make more than $500 a year.
Okay, and we will text you, Bill, to let you know when we've moved on to item 13.
I look forward to it.
Lisa?
Thank you. Anthony, do you have the presentation?
Yes.
All right, well, Anthony's queuing that up, I'll go ahead and start. Good evening, Lisa Costa-Sanders, Town Planner. I'll be introducing the item and presenting it for you, as well as Robert Sabadia, your Public Works Director, will give you an overview of the project. We also have Jason Frissel from Tetra Tech, who's the project engineer, and Barbara Beard from MIG and Associates, who's the secret project manager.
I love your background.
Thank you.
I want one.
I got a different one for every city. Anthony, are we almost there, or should I just keep going? All right, well, you're pretty familiar with this project. So as you know, you have control, or do I do?
I do, just one moment here.
Okay, no problem.
Can you see that?
Yes. You want to move to slide number three? Thank you, that's perfect. So the project plans have been completed to the 20% conceptual level. And at that stage, we are able to start the secret review process. So we've prepared an initial study, mitigated negative declaration, to analyze the project. That was available for a public review period from January 8th to February 14th. And during that time, we also held a community outreach meeting, and that was conducted on January 21st. During this public review period, we have not received any public comments on the initial study and mitigated negative declaration. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing to review the entitlements and the environmental review document on March 25th, and they did unanimously recommend approval to the city council. So the item you have before you tonight for a public hearing is consideration of the final initial study mitigated negative declaration and the conditional use permit. The development agreement is not on the agenda this evening, as rather the direction to continue to negotiate, direction to the city manager to continue to negotiate. Next slide. Robert's going to provide an overview of the project.
Okay, well, thank you, Lisa, Mayor, members of the city council, and the public. The stormwater capture facility at Carton Field is proposed on the Carton Field property, which is jointly owned by Menlo College and Menlo School. The town prepared a drainage study update back in 2015, which identified the need for a large-scale stormwater detention or storage facility to help reduce downstream flooding associated with the flows in the Atherton Channel. Additionally, the town is required to comply with requirements within the municipal regional stormwater permit, which is issued by the San Francisco Bay Regional Water Quality Control Board to address various water quality needs installation, including the installation of green infrastructure improvements to reduce the amount of pollutants in stormwater that discharge to the San Francisco Bay. The town retained Tetra Tech to help us with the design of the stormwater facility to help alleviate local flooding, alleviate local and downstream flooding using the stormwater detention facility and to help us meet the pollution reduction requirements in the municipal regional permit by capturing and filtering dry weather flows and a portion of wet weather flows and returning it back into the channel before discharging it to San Francisco Bay. So yes, next slide, please, Anthony. So this slide here is basically to provide an orientation of the project's location. The area bounded in red is the proposed location for the stormwater detention facility. It's located in Carton Field. And just for orientation purposes, the diagonal street there on the northern side of the field is El Camino Real. The property is also bounded by Alejandra to the southeast and the Atherton Channel on the northwest side. Next slide, please. So for orientation purposes, again, so this is a little closer-up view of the project area. This, again, is located within the Carton Field property. To the left side of the page is where El Camino Real is located. The bottom end heading heads towards Alejandra. And at the top, there is the Atherton Channel, and that's labeled there. And so I'm going to highlight some of the essential components. And as we get into the next slide, we'll go into a little more detail. So up at the top, there's a little grayed-out area. And so that's an area of the existing Atherton Channel that would be reconfigured from its current trapezoidal shape to a more vertical wall-shaped area. And in that section, there'd be a few facilities that would be installed. One is a inflatable rubber dam that would help us hold back water, a graded screen, a graded inlet to allow water to be taken out of the channel. And then there'd be some return piping on the other side of the dam to allow water to come back in. And so as water comes out of that channel, it would move down the page in that darker black line on the left side, where it would enter into a water, sorry, a chamber that would help filter out sediment and silt and debris, trash, et cetera, that would come downstream in the channel and be diverted into that structure. And then from there, after that stuff is removed out, it would go into the large detention facility. And so for, to help people relate, it's just a, I'll call it a larger-scale structure, similar to what people have on their private properties for stormwater detention. It's proposed to be up to nine acre feet of storage and would be located approximately 10 feet below grade. So that water would come in there, be held for a bit, and essentially be pumped out back into the channel. And as it gets pumped out, it would go through a carbon filtering system to remove more pollutants before we, before the water is returned back to the structure. Anthony, can you pull up that slide, pull up the next slide, please?
Sorry, that was probably me. I was trying to have him make it bigger on the screen. I saw the presenter view versus the slide. So I think he's trying to
Yeah. Okay, I think at the bottom, there's a, what do you call it, a little slideshow button? If you can hit that and just page through to where we were. Love to pick it up, because there's a few pictures of what some of these facilities would look like.
Have you seen that now?
No, down on the bottom, Anthony. Move your mouse toward the bottom.
Are you back?
No.
Well, as Anthony is trying to get that going, I'll go into a few other features and needs. And so what we had on that slide, and will be shown on the next one, is an exhibit that shows kind of the boundary of the construction area. And the area will be fenced off. The area of the facility is located in one of the baseball diamonds on the field. It'll be fenced off with construction fencing. There's a staging area in there. And though most of the facilities will be located below grade, there is a facility that will be located above grade, and that's essentially a prefabricated fiberglass shelter that will house the air compressor pump for that inflatable dam and the control systems. So. Anthony, you'll have next to where you have the, oh, there you go. Go ahead and forward a few more slides.
Which slide number do you want?
Keep going.
Backwards.
Oh, backwards, sorry.
Backwards.
There you go, that one. Excellent, there you go. So this slide, this slide here kind of shows the depiction of the various aspects of the project. So again, up at the top of the page, in the channel, we will be reconfiguring the shape of the channel again to something that'll be a vertical wall. There's a picture of the inflatable rubber dam, which is located in the, in the middle picture at the top. And you'll see that as it's inflated, it just basically will hold back flows within the channel. And to the right of that is an image of a graded inlet. And it's kind of like what you would see on the street is just basically a drop inlet that would allow water, as it flows and gets ponded by that rubber dam, to be captured and brought into the system. On the left side is a picture of a trash and debris capture device. And so you'll see that there's pipes, that there's a pipe that comes in to bring water. The water kind of swirls around the structure, and sediment and debris drops out. And there's an outlet pipe that comes out of there, and then it would be diverted into the underground storage tank. And a picture of one that is under construction is located on the bottom left. And so as we said, the structure will be about 10 feet below grade, have an approximate height of about 12 feet inside to hold that water. And at the bottom of the page is a little white box, and that's kind of a holder location for where the prefabricated structural, fiberglass structure will go. It's proposed to be insulated, so that as the air compressor pump is going, that the sound is dampened. And that's just basically for controls. And then what we have is, one of the things that it'll be controlling is a discharge pump. Again, similar to what folks have to drain their detention structures, there'll be a pump that will help pull the water out of the underground storage tank and back into the channel. And before going into the channel again, there is a cartridge filtration unit with carbon filters that the water, in essence, would be pushed through to be further filtered before it gets returned back into the channel. So that's basically the technical overview of the project. I do have Jason Fussell from Tetra Tech, who's the project manager on the design team, to help answer any technical questions that you may have at this time.
Does anyone have a question?
I do.
Please.
Was, you know, I apologize, I couldn't, maybe I just didn't see it. Even though this project is obviously on the field, did we do any assessment of the channel, the length of the project area?
As part of the preliminary assessment, there was an analysis, or there was a look taken at the channel in that area. I think that, say, outlined in the overall drainage study update that was done in 2015, there were recommendations of relining the entire channel. But that's not part of this project. And so, in essence, the part of the channel that would be redone, in essence, is solely related to what is required to that portion, which is required to be reconfigured to allow us to hold back and return water into the system.
Okay.
Although, I'll just say, I did see in the staff report that there's a heritage tree identified on the north side of the channel that sounds like its roots may be damaging the channel wall. So that's kind of consistent with Carrie's question about channel maintenance and condition. That, I mean, it's on the north side, so it's not directly related to the project. It's just in the area that would impact it, because we're going to be working on that area.
Yeah, thank you, Rick. And that, I mean, that was, you know, one of my comments, because I noticed that the number of trees that frankly were identified as being poor seemed to be pretty high. And I noticed the same thing that Rick did as well. And with the root issue, you know, I think that with 53% of the trees in fair condition, I just didn't know what our, is our policy in replacing those trees consistent with what we require of everybody else as part of this project? I just didn't see that in the overall report, and just maybe that I missed it. But that's 82.
Well, I think as we get into the impacts of the project, Barbara will be talking about the various environmental impacts and mitigation associated with them.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions? I have a question. I, I have a question. One thing that wasn't clear to me in the report is whether the water that, well, let me take a step back. I realize as I'm studying this system now that the focus is really on the dry weather water flow rather than the storm season water flow, which makes sense because there's probably more pollution in the, you know, when there's much less water coming down the channel. I think I had been focused on the wet season water flow because that would give us the flood control benefit that we saw as a ancillary benefit of this water treat capture project during, and that's a wet season issue. But my quest, so I don't know if you have any comment on that, but that's just an observation. My, my question is whether or not either Menlo College or Menlo School intends to use the water coming out of the storage chamber for, you know, its water use purposes. It sounded in the staff report like that was uncertain.
So I will try and answer both of your, first your comment and then your question. So in part, yes, on the dry weather flow, it helps us clear the pollutants. And as you indicated, that there is a higher concentration of pollutants in the dry weather flows. The system will have a control system wherein, as water rises in the channel, obviously, we do not want to impede the flows. And so the rubber dam will deflate. And as we start reaching a peak, the control system can open the valves to allow water to come into the detention system to act as a detention structure as those flows rise up. And then again, it would hold the water for a period of time, and then we would then discharge it back into the channel. So that's that first part. With regards to the second part, the water that is stored can conceivably be used for irrigation. It would have to be treated before it gets pumped for irrigation because then it, we'd want it to be to a level that would allow for direct public contact. But thus far, the schools have not indicated a desire to use that water. They may at some point desire to go towards a not natural surface for their fields. And so in that case, they wouldn't want the water to serve.
Okay, and so then I take it from the comment that if they choose to want to use the water for irrigation purposes, then putting in whatever filtration and treatment system to make the water usable for that is on them, not on, not on the town?
That would depend on the negotiations.
Okay.
But in any event, the intent of this project is to have it fully funded by the money that we are receiving from Caltrans.
Question on that same note. How does the testing of the, for irrigation purposes differ from the county's requirements on a well for irrigation? Is, after being treated, would they be comparable?
Jason, are you able to answer that question?
Yeah, I can. This is Jason Fussell with Tetra Tech. The, the water quality would actually be probably higher, better quality than, say, coming out of a well. But the well water, you know, wouldn't necessarily have all the bacteria and other pathogens in it that the channel would have, which is why you have to have the treatment system. So you'd have to either chemically treat it with chlorine, use ozonation, or ultraviolet treatment to kill the bacteria, and then filter out particles. So it's, it's a pretty robust system to treat the stormwater, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I have a question?
Please.
I'm just reading the, the staff memo. The, the schedule says construction is expected to take about 18 months, starting in the late spring or early summer of 2020. Is that realistic at this point?
It's intended to be 21.
So that means the project, so that sentence is off by a year because the next sentence says full operation by the end of 2021, so it's. Tell me the timeline, rather have me tell you. What's the timeline now?
To a degree, it really will depend on the negotiation with the school and the ability to obtain the rights to use the property. We had a timeline that we were shooting to have that DA authorization approved, originally concurrent with this action, but because of the issues that the schools are facing related to COVID-19, they have yet to initiate their review of the development agreement. But we were looking to move forward with design, in essence, just after that, just after we received council authorization on the execution of the DA as well as the approval of the 20% design package. Jason, I think the estimate on the design timeframe was about, was it six to nine months? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And then from there, we would be going out to bid. So we were hoping to be out to construction the spring, spring, summer of next year.
And then 18 months of construction?
Yes, but the major activities for excavating and putting in the detention structure would be done in, I believe, the first 12 months, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct, Jason?
Yeah, I think you're correct. I'm trying to get to the schedule right now, but I want to circle back to that later. Like, we could probably answer that.
Yeah. So.
A comment or a question, consistent with Mike's related timing, but yet, let's say, timing, we're, we have constraints with timing and funding component. And understanding with what's going on, are we already in discussions or trying to get in discussions with Caltrans to figure out if we can extend? Because we'll take any time we can get for not only the school, but for ourselves to not jeopardize any loss of funding?
Yes, we have been in conversations with, with Caltrans. The way that the process has been working is, is that we've been getting sequential authorizations of funds. And once we get those authorizations, we are obligated to expend those funds within 22 to 24 months. And so we have gotten authorization for funds related to the design effort. We have not sought authorization on any expenditures yet for the construction parts. And so we do have a need to expend, I think we have about $900,000 of money that needs to be expended by the end of next fiscal year. Otherwise, we would be at risk of losing what we don't spend on that portion.
Thank you, Robert.
Are there any other questions on the technical aspects of the project? And if not, we can move forward with the SEQA section?
Great, let's do that.
Okay, Anthony, next slide, and I'd like to introduce Barbara Beard. She's our consultant with MIG, and she'll be giving the overview on the environmental review process. Barbara, are you there? Okay, well, maybe I'll do it and she can catch up with us. So as I indicated earlier, the town prepared an initial study to determine if the project would have a significant environmental impact. And that analyzed to see if there's any mitigation measures that were necessary. And it didn't identify, oh, boy. Sorry. Identified mitigation measures that would reduce all potential impacts to less than significant levels. There was also early consultation with regulatory agencies that included the U.S. Corps of Engineers as well as the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. Go ahead and go to the next slide. Barbara, are you on yet? All right, we'll have Barbara for, for if there's any questions. So the mitigation measures identified in the environmental project are pretty typical relating to construction. So it has to do with construction emission and dust control that are standard barrier or quality management district measures. Standard measures in case you uncover any archaeological artifacts or human remains. There's also the Perry stable that is determined to be of potential historical significance, so make sure that's protected during construction, as well as biological resources, including the California red-legged frog, the garter snake, the turtles, as well as any nesting birds or bats during the course of construction. And then there are project design measures that have been incorporated to assist these water creatures to avoid the diversion structure. Next slide. The project will require review by the Clean Act Section 404 permit after town approves the project. And we've already had some early consultation relating to this. And so these are the permits that will be required after the town has approved the project. Next slide. Next slide, thank you. So as I indicated, we prepared a mitigation monitoring reporting plan for implementation of the adopted mitigation measures. So this will ensure that those are followed through during the course of construction. The planning commission did review the SEQA document, and they recommend that the city council adopt the resolution, adopting the initial study mitigated negative declaration, as well as approving the mitigation monitoring and reporting plan. Next slide. And next item relates to the conditional use permit. Public uses in the parks, facilities, and school zoning district require a conditional use permit. And this use permit would allow the construction, operation, and maintenance of the stormwater capture facility. The planning commission also adopted a resolution recommending city council approve the conditional use permit.
Lisa, this is Anthony. Barbara called in, and she's unmuted now.
Okay, we'll have Barbara if there's any questions relating to SEQA because I'm just about wrapped up with the presentation at this point. Thank you. And next slide. So we did do the community outreach, as I mentioned, on January 21st. That notice for the community outreach meeting was mailed to all property owners within 500 feet of the site. The town also mailed a notice, you skip this slide, please? The town mailed notice of availability of the SEQA document to all property owners within 500 feet of the site on January 8th, as well as on April 1st, and no comments have been received to date. That concludes staff presentation, and we'd be happy to try to answer any of council questions.
Does anybody have any questions?
I do not. I just, a quick one, which is, Lisa, we have not received any comments from anybody at all through this process. Is that correct?
That's correct. And we've had multiple opportunities for public comments with multiple notices.
Yeah, okay, I find that surprising.
Okay, hearing no, well, is there any public comment on this issue?
It is a public hearing. Yes, thank you.
I don't see any public comment. Any other comments from the council?
I do.
Yes, please.
I, you know, I just have, you know, and I know that it's probably a little more than outside of what we're going, where we're going. But as it stated in the report, I did have some raised concerns related to the tree component. And, you know, what, you know, what are we potentially going to do to, to change the volume of poor trees? We're talking about 175 trees that potentially could be impacted from this project. But a lot of them are already in pretty bad condition. And I hope we can, you know, figure out a way we can change that back in this project to trees that are in better condition and frankly, continue to be maintained in good condition because I didn't like what I saw in the report.
Lisa, can you hear me now? This is Barbara.
Yes.
Yes, Barbara.
Yeah, sorry, there was a problem with mute and unmute. You, you had the presentation well underway by that point, so. The Arborist report that's included in the initial study was prepared for the entire Carton Field area and the entire length of Atherton Channel that travels along Carton Field. The stormwater capture project would only affect a very short segment of the channel itself, 20 to 40 feet as the channel sides are reconfigured and the inlet is installed in the bottom of the channel. So the segment of channel that would be impacted is very narrow. And at this point, we've identified one heritage tree that will almost certainly need to be removed. It's an oak tree. And the town would comply with the town's heritage tree ordinance and replace it in kind. And that would mitigate the impact to a less than significant level. There may be one or two other trees that by the time final design is done and in place, they may also be impacted. If they are heritage trees, those trees would also be replaced according to ordinance requirements. Additionally, when the project goes through permitting with the resource agencies, the California Department of Fish and Wildlife will also be looking at tree removal along the creek channel banks and may also weigh in with permit conditions on tree replacement. But since we're only looking at the project impacting a very short section of the channel, we're not looking at the entire area that was surveyed for the tree survey.
So just, I guess, in a form of a question, because it, you know, it's, it's a little concerning. Is this in some ways a documentation trail? Basically, because there seems to be, you know, obviously, a significant amount of trees with issues. Now, would it be, obviously, in our interest and project's interest to know which ones are of safety risk to make sure that we're not the one being blamed for the condition of a tree at this point?
I guess I would defer some to Lisa and Robert, but from an environmental standpoint, heritage trees can be maintained. You can get arborists to maintain them and take away any hazardous conditions. But I would believe most of the trees are on the college property.
Yeah.
So I guess it would depend on whether they're within the channel boundaries of what the town maintains or whether they're school trees.
Thank you, Barbara.
Are there any further comments? I, I have a question. So in the course of looking at this project moving from the Holbrook Palmer Park area where we had last considered it to Carton Field, one of the benefits that we discussed that was associated with Carton Field was the possibility of pumping or moving excess water from El Camino Real and moving it through the channel so that it would be subject to this treatment facility. I don't see that anywhere in the report, and I wonder. I don't see that anywhere in the report and I wonder if that has not been pursued or if that's something that will come up later or exactly what the status is with that concept.
Mayor, so this is Robert Ovadia, Public Works Director. So that is something that we have been looking at and in looking, in moving forward, we've talked with Tetra Tech about including that in their design scope of services. Our ability to incorporate that work is really going to be based on funding availability. But the real issue, I'm going to say this, is that in terms of project, with most of that project being constructed within street right of way for installing pipes and other drainage facilities, et cetera, the, there aren't really any environmental impacts anticipated associated with doing work on El Camino Real. And so the real, let me say, the, the project components that have environmental impacts are really what we're looking at here.
Okay, so that addresses the latter part of my question comment, which is it'll, it'll come up later.
Yeah.
Okay. In terms of action, what the requested action is to approve the resolutions that are identified as attachments four, five and six. Am I right about that?
Council's being requested to approve the resolution that adopts the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program as well as the conditional use permit and requisite findings along with that.
Do you want this?
You're also, you're also being asked to authorize the city manager to continue negotiations with Menlo School and Menlo College.
Can I make a motion?
Please.
As she stated first, we're going to do this in a two-tier, a motion to approve the resolution adopting the findings of fact, approving the initial study mitigated negative decoration, mitigation monitoring and reporting program and conditional use permit for Carton Field Stormwater Capture Project.
Second. Okay, let's take a roll call.
Whitmer.
Absent.
Leece.
Hi.
Lempres.
Hi.
Lewis.
Hi.
Nigoya.
Yes.
I make a second motion. Direct staff to negotiate an agreement with Menlo College, Menlo School for use of the property at Carton Field Stormwater Capture Project. Second.
Whitmer. Oh, is not, is absent. Is, um, Leece.
Hi. Hi.
Lewis.
Hi.
And Nigoya.
Yes. Okay, I think that finishes item 12. Is there anything else we need to do on item 12?
We just need to have the record reflect that Vice Mayor, excuse me, Councilmember Whitmer was recused from participation in this vote.
Okay, Anthony, please have the record reflect that refusal.
Will do.
And we will.
I texted him.
You texted him?
I did.
Okay, we will move on to item 13. Which is a review and discussion of potential revenue and expenditure impacts due to COVID-19 for fiscal year 1920 and 2021. George or Robert, maybe.
It's Mr. Barone, yes.
Thank you, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you, Mayor, Council, members of the public. Yes, before you use item 13, this is a, item is a review and discussion of the potential revenue and expenditure impacts due to COVID-19 for fiscal year 2019, 20 and upcoming 2020, fiscal year 2021. As you all recall, staff presented a mid-year budget review for fiscal year 1920 of the general fund at its February 5th study session. At that time, staff noted that the fiscal year 1920 budget projected a healthy, healthy outlook on finances. With the impact of COVID-19, staff is providing review of those fiscal year 1920 budget expectations and also providing a brief look at our fiscal year 2021 projections. As everyone's aware, the town's primary source of revenues, property tax taxes, and they represent 71% of the town's general fund revenues. The current year fiscal year 2021 property tax revenues and forecasts are still valid as the property taxes are based on what occurred in the 2019, in 2019 with respect to assessed values. With respect to COVID-19, we do not yet know what the full impact of, of any potential mortgage freezes, rejections in taxes, foreclosures, or in some cases, delayed collection of taxes, what that will be. As it anticipated, that COVID-19 is a limited-term impact with a fairly robust and quick recovery period once the shelter in place is done. Our current property taxes for 1920 is estimated at 11.47 million. Our California CPI is projected at, is at 2% for this upcoming year. And HDL estimates a 3.3% increase in next net tax value. During mid-year, HDL has suggested 3.6 to 4.5% increase in property taxes. And this is inclusive of the California CPI. We are projecting a 3.9% increase in secured property taxes of 9.6 million for fiscal year 2021. With that, as you can see on your page two of the staff report, the total property tax projection is 12 million, it's 12,48,000 for fiscal year 2021. Again, this is not taking into account of yet any unknown impacts of COVID-19. There may be some minor reductions in supplemental taxes, tax revenues, transfer of ownership or new construction that may impact revenues through in August. The recession impact, there's clearly no determination of this is beginning of a recession. During the Great Recession 2018, Atherton did suffer a drop in assessed valuations, but that did not incur until two fiscal years after the event. On page three of your staff report, there's a, there's a table reviewing, showing what occurred back in 2008 Great Recession. The thought is that COVID-19, again, it will be a short term and the economy will bounce back within the year once the shelter in place is lifted. If there, however, is a similar event to the Great Recession, the town could see a reduction in median prices and that could in turn impact next net taxable values. It's noted that median prices in 2019 was, is at 7.1 million. Back in 2008, it went from 4 million to 3 million in 2010. So there was a reduction of 1 million in median prices over that two-year period. And again, that did not happen until two years after the recession. At the present time, there's no delay in payments of our fiscal year 1920 property taxes. And I like to report, as of today, we've received a wire for, from San Mateo County for our second installment of taxes. So we're close to about 90% and we received a 3.2 million wire from the county. So we're about 8.5 million for secured taxes and there's a remaining second period cleanup on the second installment of taxes and that will occur in May-June timeframe. Another revenue that is part of our property taxes is the property tax and new VLF. As you recall, in fiscal year 1920 presented at the mid-year report, there was a 42 million county shortfall in the property tax and new VLF. Of that 42 million, Atherton's portion was 230,000. We received the VLF today, that second portion, and I like to, I'm happy to report that that shortfall was only 55,000 for fiscal year 1920. For the future, HDL projects VLF of 1 million, 1.25 million for fiscal year 2021. In our current fiscal year, the, prior to mid-year, our estimate for VLF was 1,227,000. So we're, we're only 55,000 short of that estimate at the beginning of the year. One of the next revenues that, that the town receives is ERAP. And as you all know, we treat it as a one-time revenue. We've done that for the last several years. Last month, the state legislative office issued a report and it focused on the excess ERAP and it asserts that the five Bay Area, Bay Area excess ERAP counties are overstating their excess ERAP. And again, this was prior to COVID-19 that this report was issued. Illustrated in your staff report on page four is the past uses of ERAP funds. So you can see where we have put those priorities over the years. As you can see from beginning of 1617 fiscal year, town allocated ERAP to the Town Center project and staff continues, has continued to budget ERAP conservatively. So within the report, you can see that revenue, ERAP revenue has fluctuated from 1,20,000 in fiscal year 1314 to a high of 1.7 million that we received in this current 1920 fiscal year. I like to report that upcoming fiscal year 2021 budget, staff had budgeted 1.45 million for ERAP revenue and budgeted 1.5 million in fiscal year 2021. Again, these, these revenues are earmarked for Town Center project, although actual allocation is a year-to-year as part of the budget process. Again, I'd like to reiterate, a loss of ERAP revenue coinciding with a possible reduction in future property tax revenue could result in a reduction in the town's annual surplus deck dedicated to the Town Center, Center project. County controllers disagree with the LAO issued by the state and they plan to issue more information in the coming weeks regarding their findings. San Mateo County, in anticipation of possible state rate of these revenues could, could set aside a portion of agency ERAP revenue in reserve as they continue to work legislatively on this issue. In the report, staff report, it said it could be 10, anywhere between 10 and 20% set aside in reserves. There was some other communication that the city manager had provided to the council as well regarding the ERAP. Staff recommends that we reduce the budgeting ERAP amount to 1.1 million. There's in some indications that ERAP revenue could move back to the 1617 levels. So you can see in fiscal year 1617, we received 1.1 million in ERAP revenues. So staff recommends a budget of that amount in the next coming, upcoming fiscal year. So what would that mean? So this would be an overall reduction of 750,000 in this below-the-line funding from fiscal year 2021 through fiscal year 2122. Again, the city manager report addresses this potential reduction and it addresses, addressed it more aggressively. We will continue to monitor this with the county. There's, we have a, a meeting on Friday, this Friday regarding this with the county and we'll also have the county assessor's office as well and the Department of Education, California Department of Education will also be involved to discuss the ERAP and the future potential. So within the staff report, you can see that we project for fiscal year 2021 total property taxes of 13.1 million. That includes the budget of ERAP at 1.1 million. Other revenues I'd like to report about is sales and use tax. We're not heavily relying, relying upon sales and use tax revenue. So we project a decrease of sales and use tax to 285,000 of about, the reduction of about 31,000 in, in sales and use tax. The other revenues that we do rely upon is our charges for services and this is our building and planning and public works charges for services. This is on page five and six of your staff report. So building department revenues are projected to see a decrease in approximately 10 to 15% in this upcoming fiscal year. Again, this is projected based on the current prohibition on residential construction during this COVID-19 and not knowing the extent of the duration of this shelter in place. So the current fiscal year budget at 1.69 million. This revenue is anticipated to be reduced to 1.27 million in the current upcoming, in the COVID impact for this current fiscal year. We're currently not issuing permit other than for health and safety work. Once the shelter in place orders lifted, there's the expectation that the issuance of new permits would, could ramp up and, and rather quickly. Staff will continue to monitor the building department revenues during next fiscal year. I feel that once it's clear, the contractors will be eager to continue their projects as well as begin new construction projects in the town. Other revenues also having up, revenues for building also have an impact operationally as the, the cost of service is directly related to the revenue received. So reduction in revenue leads to reduction in the cost component for the building department. Public Works currently issues encroachment permits for construction activity and is currently not issuing any permits other than emergency health and work, health and welfare. The COVID-19 impact is short-term, in short-term revenue is similar to the building department revenue as far as the encroachment permits. So the building department, planning and building and public works departments comprise the majority of the charges for service revenue and town projects a decrease of 455,000 in the upcoming 2021 budget to 2.2 million. Other revenues, park revenues, we expect that to go down approximately 70% to our current 1920 budget to next year of 166,000. Again, this revenue is also predicated on the revenue for our expenditure depart, component of our park services. Other revenues, miscellaneous revenues, you can see in the staff report, they've been adjusted and they've been listed in staff report and we, we have a reduction of 541,000 miscellaneous revenues to a COVID impact of 446,000. We project in 2021 for our total miscellaneous revenues to be at 472,000. So on page seven of your staff report, there's a projected general fund 2021 revenues that will be, that are listed based, there's a COVID impact to our revenues and the projected 2021 budget. These will be discussed more in detail at our May 6 study session. In summary, during the mid-year budget review, staff did estimate revenues at 18.23 million with the recent COVID impact. It looks at the, there's a potential reduction of 814,000 for fiscal year 1920 to 17.4 million. It's anticipated that the fiscal year 2021 revenues will also see a reduction of 745,000 as compared to our current fiscal year estimated revenues of 18.23 million. Most of the impacts are ERAP revenue reduction, reductions from the state, reductions in service charges and in particular, building permits and our encroachment permits. We don't know, you know, disclaimer, a slowdown in construction may have a ripple effect on our property tax values down the line, but operationally, operationally, we feel like it can be weathered. More, more evaluation is done and is necessary, but in long-term, we, assuming that property values remain relatively stable in the town, we will be able to maintain a healthy gap between our revenues and expenditures. Again, budgeted expenditures, if COVID-19 persists, there could be operational changes at all levels in the public and private sector for extended period of time. Some of our departments can weather those and that is specifically building department are driven by, driven by the, our permits that are issued and also planning can be scaled back as well. But also there's, there's a operation component to planning and public works. Public works, as you know, is handles all our infrastructure needs for the town. So overall, our general fund expenditures for 2021 are estimated at 15.7 million. These expenditures continue to be evaluated based on operational needs to provide our consistent services throughout the community. We're still working with department operational expenditures budgets and identifying any or known expenditures and making those adjustments as we complete this fiscal year 2021 budget process. So you can see on page, here if your staff report, you can see there's the impact of the COVID in expenditures and the projected 2021 budget. Again, during mid-year, we projected 18.23 million in revenue and we had a projected net positive change in fund balance of 3.3 million to an ending fund balance of 25.83 million. With that COVID impact, staff is presenting on page nine of your staff report, the effect of that. With the effect of COVID, the end of year fund balance projection is now at 25.2 million. This is a reduction of 550,000 less than what we projected at mid-year budget. Including the COVID impact and our potential fiscal year 2021 budget expenditures, the total general fund projected year-end fund balance for 2021 is 27.7 million. With that, that's the conclusion of my staff report. Open to any questions.
Does anyone have any questions?
Where were the charts?
Where were the charts?
Charts.
Oh, yes, the PowerPoint. Well, that, that'll be in, on our May sixth study session. You know, when I, when I, when I have them, nobody wants them.
We know that.
I don't have them.
No comment.
Okay, so, uh, a, a real question, a real question though, um, is that, yes, and thank you for that review. Uh, I know that one of the things that's come up, and, and Rick knows this too, has come up, uh, during some of the discussions with the county and specifically came up in one of the workstations I was in yesterday, was concern amongst all the city members about the E-RAP, and of course, you know, that's a TBD, as you know. So given, given the potential reduction in our costs, and I know some of our costs, as you pointed out, rightfully so, are, are tied to the expenses because we're doing revenue share, but were there not? Uh, I suppose that when you come back with the budget, uh, you and George will also be coming back with, with thoughts that if we're going to incur this, there are some steps that we might need to take to try and save, uh, some expenses as well. And so hopefully, we're going to see that, um, you know, because we're, we're in a pretty good shape now, and for the upcoming years, we believe we're in pretty good shape, but if, if, you know, something goes awry, then we need to understand where we are because we, you know, we are making, we're going to be borrowing a, a good sum of money that we want to get paid back fairly quickly. So it's just a comment. Thank you very much.
Mike?
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, I just, Robert, when, uh, when will we have E-RAP funds either in hand or not? When, when should we expect to get a, you know, a check in the mail there?
Uh, well, we received our E-RAP funds for this fiscal year already. For fiscal year nineteen twenty, we received, um, a portion in August of two thousand nineteen, and we received our second installment in January of two thousand twenty. So we've received our full E-RAP for fiscal year nineteen twenty, and that amount was one million seven hundred and eighty-four thousand. At, um, during our budget, however, we have budgeted one point three million, so it came in higher than what we had, uh, projected, um, initially at the beginning of the fiscal year. So we have received our E-RAP funds for this year.
But, Robert, let me just clarify, it, weren't those funds for fiscal eighteen, nineteen E-RAP?
Correct. Um, so, uh, well, there's two, correct. We received all our revenue, but correct on the, how the dispersment happens. So we'll receive, um, the nineteen twenty, um, we'll, we received a portion of that in January. So in August of this year of two thousand twenty, we'll receive this forty-five percent of our, um, E-RAP for fiscal year nineteen twenty, if, if that makes sense.
That, that sounds better.
Yes. And that, that is projected, um, at, to, we'll receive forty-five percent of that amount.
So, just to repeat then what you said, so we get that in forty-five percent in August and, and in, in forty-five or fifty percent in January?
Correct. We, well, in January.
Yeah.
Right. In January of next year of two thousand twenty-one, we'll receive the fifty percent of the twenty twenty-one E-RAP. In January of twenty-one. So it's, it's, it's a delay, uh, basically almost a year delay, um, in disport, in, in apportioning out the E-RAP revenues from one fiscal year to the next.
But, but the five percent that the county is looking at withholding, or, well, the five percent that the county withholds every year, and then disperses a year later, that's the percentage that they're looking at increasing up to twenty percent?
Correct. Correct. And yeah, and, and that, that will be more, um, kind of, during these next couple of months, as through discussions with other, the other five area counties and with the cities as well, they're, they're going to come up with a methodology of what they think that would be to withhold.
Uh, are there any other?
Well, if, if I could just, I'm trying to get a sense of when, when we can be comfortable this money's going to come in, and it, and I'm actually a little confused. It sounds like the county may be withholding up to twenty percent, which would change all the percentages you just talked to us about in August, you know, August and January. So when do you think we will get, we will receive some funds that would actually be ours, we'd be solid?
In August of this year of two thousand twenty. Um, so in August of two thousand twenty, uh, there's estimated that we'll receive about eight hundred and fifty-three thousand of, in E-RAP money. Um, and that's the first apportionment. Uh, the second apportionment will be in January. So, and, and that'll, that is, is still being discussed of what that will be for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one revenue.
Okay, and if I could, maybe I'll turn to Mona and ask a, a question, it's probably totally unfair, but Mona, do we have a legal right to these funds? And if, for example, the state said, gosh, we're out of money because so much has been happening with COVID nineteen, we are sweeping these funds to use for a higher purpose, to give to some whatever, some other thing. Do we have a right to this, or, or can the state do that?
I don't think so. I'd have to research it actually, but, um, I believe that they're, they're only ours if they're available.
So when you say you don't think, because you don't think we have a right to it, that that it could be diverted?
Correct.
Okay.
So.
And if I may add, um, oh, go for it, sorry.
Yeah, I, I was going to say that, um, first off, uh, you know, there was a letter, George had a, a link in his note, uh, when this was sent out, that there was a letter about, first off, the reduction in, potential reduction in E-RAP because many counties, possibly including ours, were not including charter schools in the, uh, in the E-RAP distribution, and they've been told that they need to, and so that's why one bit of withhold, withholding is going to be there. And then, um, George, you know, you obviously chime in, but you indicated to me that, uh, in your discussion with the county manager, that he said, you know, forty to fifty percent may be withheld to, to serve as a cushion to see when, when and if the county would start releasing that, those funds. And so, you know, I don't want to re, I don't want to have all of us think about, it's only going to be twenty percent if it's going to be forty or fifty. If you could comment on it, that would be appreciated.
Sure. So the, uh, Robert's discussions at the finance level, uh, has resulted in the number that's upwards of twenty percent or so, right, Robert?
Correct.
The, the conversations I've been having with the various city managers and the county managers, but included in those conversations has continuously been, don't count on E-RAP. Uh, it's eventually going to go away. It could go away incrementally, upwards as high as forty or fifty percent, but at some point, we're going to lose E-RAP.
True. I confirm, we've always known that, we've always known that, and it, it's never been a guarantee that we were going to continue to get it. It's been my opinion. So I don't, I don't think this should be any surprise to anybody that, um, you know, at some, they're going to start, uh, withholding it, and it will eventually, uh, be reallocated in some way. And that's why we always kept it below the line, um, and not count on it. But then it got to be so big, and it just seemed like it was such a, you know, um, big number that we could use.
It's an attractive business.
Yeah, right, exactly. So I, I'm not, I'm not surprised.
Yeah, and, 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 sir, Robert, if I may add to, on the county side of all the five, just of these five counties, um, they believe that the intent of, um, that the, they re, we analyze the applicable statutes, and they conclude that they are, um, they are following the statutes, um, that are within the law. So that's where the disagreement is, and, and, you know, they believe that their methodologies for excess E-RAP complies with California law. So there's where the, the analysis and the disagreement is. So all five counties believe that they're following the state law and, and the whole charter, funding of charter schools. Um, they believe that the intent of the current statutes, um, that, um, that should not fund E-RAP schools through certain funding, funds in the E-RAP, um, component. So they still contend, the, the county level and through their council, still contend that they're following the statutes, um, current California law statutes in the calculation.
Okay, is there any other question?
Sir, a couple more, not, not on E-RAP, but just, Robert, do we expect any impact from the delay in property tax payments, meaning that property taxpayers have been given an extra month in effect to pay their taxes? Will that affect us timing or anything else in any way?
No, because we're, we are a teetered county, um, at city, so we get the, the money that is calculated based off of what the assessed values are, and the county is responsible for collecting, um, that tax. And that includes they collect late fees, um, and they get to keep the late fees, uh, and that's part of being a teetered, um, agency.
Okay.
So we get our money up, upfront.
And then fi- final question, which may be slightly unfair, but, um, if, if we were to assume that the state budget i- is, the state's going to look very aggressively at all sources of findings because their budget is, is really, uh, taking a hit, um, do you see any, any other pots of money here that we should think about where the state might reach in and take some of it out?
Um, other than E-RAP, I, I, and, and the other component may be the, the property tax VLF, um, that, that we had a shortfall this year. But in previous years, when there was a shortfall, they did, um, the state did put that shortfall into their pre, their next upcoming budgets to fund. So other than E-RAP, I would say VLF, and then possibly on the sales tax, there could be, um, some changes on there, but.
Why not S, why not SB one, since they keep trying to steal that as well?
Correct. And, and that, that, that all trickles down to gas tax, um, that some of our, uh, streets and roads money is, is based off of sales tax. Um, so, uh, there's a reduction in that, in the sales tax, not just because of this event. There could be a potential, um, like you mentioned, the SBW one, uh, SBW, SB one changes, um, as well.
Although, do remember, uh, Prop one A a few years back protected a lot of local government revenue sources that are coming via the state. So those, while the state can take those funds that are protected under Prop one A, they do have an obligation to repay them within a set timeframe. I think it's like ten years.
Correct.
Okay. I'd also note that, that gas taxes may be very low.
Yes.
For several months.
Yes. Uh-huh. Yeah, and that, that's another thing that I've been reviewing. There, the latest, um, report out on the gas tax component, um, was back in January from the state. So, uh, there's anticipation that maybe there's, won't be anything coming out until the state's budget, um, in June, uh, or hopefully sooner, something will come out with the next couple of weeks or, or in May. Um, some information regarding that, but yes, I anticipate that, um, there'll be some reduction in the gas tax from at least, at least the end of March, um, going forward.
Okay, is there any other questions? Uh, let me see if there's any public comment on this issue.
I think we lost everybody but Wally.
Okay, hearing.
Oh, Dennis Mulligan is still on the phone, but I don't know if either one of them had comments.
There could be, there could be a comment, which is why I'm asking.
Yep.
Uh, but hearing none, uh, are there any additional comments from the council? I think this is just an advice matter, right? There's no action required.
That's correct. Correct.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you, Robert.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate it.
Are there any council reports? Is Greg Conlon on the line?
I'm going to tell him to start dialing in.
Okay. Uh, with no additional public comments, a motion to adjourn is appropriate.
Okay, so move.
Okay.
Okay, that'll carry.
Aye, aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Great, great meeting.
Good night.
Hi.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you, bye.